I'm calling to order the Wheat Ridge City Council meeting of August 12, 2013. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Joyce J., Joseph Demott.
Present.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Joyce, George Pond.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 22, 2013?
So moved second.
If motion for approval is seconded by Mr. Stark or any changes to the minutes, please poll the council. Mike, did you have to abstain? Did you hear the 22nd? Could you please clear the board? Mike has to abstain. He wasn't here. Right, she did. She did.
That's what I was waiting for. Please re-vote.
Well, that's okay. He can make the move.
Tracy, Joyce, and Kristy. Thank you. Motion carries six to zero with councilmember Stites and Davis abstaining.
Thank you. Move on to your proclamations and ceremonies. We have the chief presenting an award tonight to Mr. Ron Kieffel, so please step forward to the podium.
Mayor and council, I've got an award tonight that I'd like to give to Ron Kieffel and employees of Wheat Ridge Cyclery. It's a citizens' award. And it was written by our school resource officer Barry Malloy. And the letter reads, "Wheat Ridge School Resource Officer Barry Malloy became aware of a nine-year-old victim of bullying by two 12-year-olds. During this incident of bullying, the two bullies damaged the nine-year-old's bicycle, making it unrideable in need of repair. The nine-year-old's mother refused to make a police report or file charges against the two 12-year-olds due to her fear of retaliation. The victim's mother is a single mother, and she was not in a financial position to repair her son's bicycle. Officer Barry Malloy solicited the help of the employees of Wheat Ridge Cyclery to repair the bike. Ron's employees gladly assisted and fixed the bicycle at no cost to the victim's family or the police department. This gesture of generosity and caring has significantly touched this nine-year-old's family. It is indicative of the way your business is run and why it is so successful in our community. Your business and its employees are a positive reflection of our humble community. For your assistance, manager Ron Kieffel and the employees of Wheat Ridge Cyclery are awarded the Wheat Ridge Police Department Citizen Award and Police Ceremonial Challenge Coin." Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. We appreciate this award and honor. This is Doug Biddle, our service manager. He's the guy that's really in charge of making sure the service department is doing well, and it's his team that really took care of this young gentleman. And, you know, for us as bicycles and all of that, cycling is very important, and we love to see the kids out there and using the paths and the streets. And, you know, there's a lot of freedom and self sense of exploration and really getting a sense of who you are through a bicycle. So we are very glad that we can help the community in this way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug?
No, no. Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you. So the next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish to speak on any matter that's not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes, please step forward to the podium and spell your last name for the record, and please state your city or your address. And if you want to form a line against the wall, if you're here for a public comment on any item that's not on the agenda. You're up.
My name is Kathy Tolman, and I've been a Wheat Ridge resident for a long time. I'm here to talk about the Jeffco Five Grassroots Coalition, which is a multi-partisan group of citizens from across Jefferson County. And it reflects Republicans, Democrats, and independents who are interested in good government. Right now, we have three county commissioner districts, and Jefferson County has nearly as many residents as the entire state of Wyoming. We think that our government could be more responsive and effective if we had five commissioners. Right now, our county commissioners must live in one of the districts, but they run for election countywide. To change the current system, we would need to put a proposal on the 2014 ballot. It would say something like, "Shall the membership of the Jefferson County Board of Commissions be increased from three-member board to a five-member board?" The law says that the district boundaries have to be updated to even out any population differences every 10 years using new census data. The redistricting must be conducted during the odd years and completed prior to July 1st. If this ballot measure were to pass in 2014, the board must redraw the districts in the first half of 2015. It also must be decided if the five commissioners must live in one of the districts and elected by the residents voters in that district, or should it be three commissioner resident in districts to be elected district-wide and two commissioners to be elected by the voters in the whole county. So those kinds of things would have to be decided. I think this is an important issue to bring up to my fellow Wheat Ridge residents and see how they think about it and how they would like our county government to function. This is a way to expand democracy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record and state your address, please.
It's Thomas Slattery, S.L.A.T.T.E.R.Y., 6869 West 32nd Avenue. I represent Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods. I just want to announce that we're going to hold the annual election forum on October 2nd in the council chambers here. We will have questions for the mayor and council candidates. We'll have speakers on the city ballot issue, any other ballot issues. And I also understand there are going to be school board candidates this year, so we will invite them. We again wish to solicit questions citywide from all interested persons and organizations that will submit questions regarding city issues that we can pose to the candidates. Again, we'll boil it down to a specific number and draw them from the hat. The mayor's informed me that we don't need a resolution this year, so I would like to thank the council, the city manager, and his staff for being so generous as to give us the council chamber and the television facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven. Please spell your last name for the record.
Hoppe, H.O.P.P.E. Hi, I'm Janice Hoppe. I am one of the coordinators for Live Local, and I was just coming up here to remind some people of some events we have coming up. So we have the last cruiser crawl of the season coming up on Thursday. We meet in front of Wheat Ridge Cyclery at 6:30. We will be joining West 29th this time, so it won't be just on 38th Avenue. We also have a learn-how-to-build-your-own-worm-composting class coming up, led by one of our citizens. And on Saturday at the Carnation Festival, we are going to have a Team Live Local Chili in the Chili Cook-Off, and I will be making my Rocky Mountain Red, so please come see me and vote for me. Thanks.
There's no campaigning on this time of the season. Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing done, we'll move on to the public input on the budget. Please step forward and spell your last name for the budget, or for your spell your last name if you'd like to comment on the 2014 proposed budget. So please step forward and state your name and your address.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Giordano, G.I.O.R.D.A.N.O., over on 35th and Quay. Just wanted to start out by saying we moved here a couple of years ago from, you know, southwest Denver, and love the community. It's a very special, wonderful community, tight-knit, you know, and they've really reached out to me. Immediately, I got roped into being treasurer of Wheat Ridge 2020, and, you know, just moving forward with that. One of the things I'd like to say is I'm just very impressed personally with what's happening on 38th Avenue. It is nothing short of amazing, and it's come at some tremendous personal and professional and political sacrifices by a lot of folks, but it is on the up and up. It's looking great, but there's still some work to do. There is a couple businesses out there that, you know, there are some areas that really are wanting businesses. Right now, they're either empty lots or, you know, something to that, you know, or vacant property. And we'd really like to start recruiting some developers in there, especially on our corner of 38th and Wadsworth, our corner of 38th and Kipling. There's still some work to do, so when you're considering your budget for next year, if you could consider continuing to fund Wheat Ridge 2020 and the community development efforts and all the wonderful work that you guys do. Slate aside, since, oh my god, do I have the microphone? That new restaurant on West 29th, I believe it is, is outstanding. It's a true gem for Wheat Ridge. It's wonderful. Thank you for letting that exist. Thank you.
Hi. Hoppe, H.O.P.P.E., 7,000 West 35th Avenue. I have a written statement I'd like to read. Three years ago, our business compass construction had grown beyond our space on Tennyson Street in Denver, in the Highlands Berkeley neighborhood. When we started to look for relocation options, our Realtor had been on the Realtor tour from Wheat Ridge 2020 and told us to take a look at Wheat Ridge. He had pointed out the great incentives that were in the community that were offered through the low-interest loans and through the matching grant programs. We took a look, and after our due diligence, we decided to go ahead and go with Wheat Ridge. We were looking to stay in Denver, but we kind of found like a building that spoke to us. It was pretty much the only person that could do anything with that building would be a contractor. So we reclaimed and remodeled the building that had sat vacant and half-done for years on 38th near Reed. There are now three thriving businesses in our building. We have also purchased a home in Wheat Ridge a year later. We're raising our children and our family here in Wheat Ridge. We are investing our time and our energy into our community, and as a client, I understood the importance of the loan and grant programs. And I'm proud to say that I'm a board member for Wheat Ridge 2020 and a board member for the Wheat Ridge Business District at the vote of the city council. Through my board service, I helped dream up and create one of the popular Wheat Ridge 2020 programs called Live Local Wheat Ridge, where you can find us at Live Local Wheat Ridge Facebook and LiveLocalWheatRidgeMeetup.com. I've invested hundreds of hours volunteering with this program, and I know that it's not just about buildings and rehabbing buildings that will make Wheat Ridge great, but it's about people and creating a sense of community in place. Live Local is a growing movement of people who are living, eating, shopping, farming, exercising, and spending their time and money in Wheat Ridge. We really promote for people to look at Wheat Ridge first before they go out into other communities. And this program is attracting people to our community, as I've been told by many people at lots of our different events. And it's also encouraging people to do their move-up growing, their family move-up growing and new house-buying and staying in Wheat Ridge. It's one thing to leave your house when you move, but it's another thing to leave your community. And I can say when I moved out of Denver that I lived in the same house for 10 years. I don't miss my neighbors. Been here for two, and I would miss my neighbors greatly and the friends that I've made here if we moved tomorrow. Please fund Wheat Ridge 2020's core programs like Live Local or like the Realtor Tour, which is how we came to find out about all the programs in Wheat Ridge. I would also like to ask you to fund as a committee member for the Ridge at 38 to continue to fund the efforts that are going on on 38th Avenue with events like the holiday celebration that was wonderful last year, Wheat Fest, and then we also have trunk-or-treat coming up, which I'm personally excited about and working on. And I hope that you remember that those things help bring people to Wheat Ridge and to our main street and show them what we have going here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Britta Fisher, F.I.S.H.E.R., and I'm the executive director of Wheat Ridge 2020, where we are very fortunate to have many community members volunteer and some of those on our board. Thank you to Joe and Janice, who spoke eloquently about their connection to the organization. I just wanted to summarize a few numbers for you on some recent results and then share a couple stories and then implore you to continue funding community and economic development. One, our building-up-business-loan program has been mentioned several times. We've had great success with this program. We've now funded eight properties since 2008. We've loaned $400,000, and we've created over $1.4 million in property improvements. So that's a lot of private investment that's been coupled with that nonprofit governmental partnership, and that's been a great success. It's gotten us key investors like the Hoppes, as Janice spoke earlier. Two, with our work with Ridge at 38, we're doing a contract with the city to help with the marketing and events. And I think it's good just to point out some of the metrics that you've covered, so I'll go over them very quickly. But we've seen a net increase of over 30 businesses in the Ridge at 38 corridor, and that's really a wonderful thing to see. We've also seen a 15.1% increase in the tax, in the sales tax earnings since 2010. So those are some accomplishments worth noting. Moving on to some of the other things that were mentioned, events. The Live Local events have been a huge success. I've seen many of you at Live Local events. Some of you have sponsored Live Local events. These are great ways to get our community members out. Neighbors meeting neighbors, relationships, and people help really strengthen those bonds that connect a person to the community, and we've seen that work time and time again. And it's a great way for new people in our community of whatever age to meet others and get plugged in. We also do tours. Janice mentioned the Realtor Tour, and I just wanted to bring you up to speed on a few other tours that you may or may not have been on. One is the Chicken Coop Tour. We just had our first Chicken Coop Tour earlier in August. Showed off eight coops around Wheat Ridge. There's a thriving and growing sense of community around those who want to farm and have local ingredients. They're just tastier if they're grown here in Wheat Ridge, right? So we're excited to see Live Local Harvest take off. Another tour that's coming up is the Mid-Century and Modern Home Tour. If you don't have it on your calendars already, that's September 7th. We did this tour two years ago. We alternate it with the Realtor Tour, and it was a huge success. We had about 350 people at the first one. We're capping tickets to 400 for this one, because that's a lot of people to have through your home. But we have some great examples of mid-century and modern homes. It's something that can get attention from all over the metro area, and connoisseurs of the mid-century and modern will love this tour, and we hope that you'll come and enjoy it, too. And then finally, I wanted to end with the Welcome to Wheat Ridge Tour. This was the first time we did this this year. We chartered a bus and did the Welcome to Wheat Ridge Tour. We sent postcards to people who have purchased a new home in Wheat Ridge in the last two years. We quickly sold out that bus. They got it about three weeks before the event, and it was sold out in no time. And we met at Brewery Ricoli, and we went around town, and it was just wonderful to see all of these people get to know their community better, enjoy it, enjoy meeting other new people. Specifically, there was a couple that bought their home because of the urban agriculture rules that we have in Wheat Ridge. They invited another couple to Wheat Ridge. They bought a home. That couple invited another couple, and they bought a home. In fact, one of them's here tonight. And they all are here in Wheat Ridge, and so heartwarming stories like that are just really encouraging to see how things are improving and people are investing here. So with that in mind, we just urge you to continue funding community and economic development. It brings results and it helps our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Wilson, W.I.L.S.O.N., and I live at 3743 J Street. I'm a member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Team in Wheat Ridge, and I just wanted to encourage council to remember the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan that was completed a year or so ago in the 2014 budget, and remember that it doesn't have to be completed, you know, all as a package, but perhaps there's things, certain infrastructure projects, that there's low incremental costs where bicycle and pedestrian facilities could be added in, you know, with low cost. I think that's something that really can draw people to the community and make it a more friendly and pleasant place to live. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the 2014 budget proposals? Please play your last name for the record.
My name is Susan Motika, M as in Mary, O-T as in Tom, IKA. And I live at 3651 Miller Court. Last year at this time, my son, who is now a junior at CU, was here testifying about the same issue. He's at Wright Coast Pizza right now working, so sent me in his stead. I'm here to address the funding allocations in your 2014 budget to support active transportation in the city of Wheat Ridge. I think it's so clear, and you heard from the previous speaker and others, that these multimodal connections for people of all ages, enabling them to move about safely is not just good for the health of our residents, it supports a sense of community, a growing housing market, and supports our business sector. What I hear from people, and people are so excited about the housing market coming back and the sense that our community is coming back. And what I'm hearing from people, we're trying to recruit into District 3, into Miller Court. They want to live in a community where they can ride their bikes safely down 38th. They can go to the local park or to a friend's house for a playdate. Small businesses want to locate in corridors where people ride, stay, and play, and pay. And older adults increasingly, and we have an older population, as you know, want to be able to age in place so that they can be active and continue being active right outside their door. So I know you know this, and you have many, many competing priorities as our budget recovers in Wheat Ridge. But I would ask you to specifically consider the funding of the bike lanes on Pierce Street between 26th and 44th Avenue. Why? First of all, it had a number-one ranking. Of the 48 projects evaluated, bike lanes on Pierce between 26th and 44th ranked number one in the city's adopted 2010 Bicycle PED master plan. Secondly, spoken community support. You heard about it tonight from the previous speaker. At the May 7 Wheat Ridge Community Forum, several residents expressed the need for a well-connected network of safe and reliable bicycle pedestrian facilities in the community. The Ridge at 38th, we are encouraging, as you heard again from previous speakers, more and more businesses are locating. There is more and more traffic going to 38th. Let's try to make that traffic, that bike safety, even safer by providing this connectivity on Pierce Street. There's also the connection to the Clear Creek Bike Trail. There's a trail head to the Green Belt at Pierce and 48th. Bike lanes on Pierce up to 44th would improve safe access for cyclists traveling to and from the Green Belt's multi-use trail. Continuity with Edgewater. We learned that later this summer, Edgewater will strip bike lanes on Pierce between 20th and 26th. Doing this for Pierce Street, as proposed, will provide really important continuity in the bicycling network, providing continuity between Edgewater and Wheat Ridge. So you have so many competing criteria and so many competing priorities, which I really understand. But I think that this issue of being healthy, the connectivity, the ability to bicycle, is a real drawing card for Wheat Ridge. It's a serious drawing card. And we need to take it very seriously and to support it. And it's something our kids are crying out for. It's something that people that want to relocate here are crying out for. And it's going to just better our community, which is a great place to live already. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the budget? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Item one is Council Bill 11-2013. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 112013, an ordinance amending Sections 4.1, 4.8, and 4.31 of the Wheat Ridge Municipal Code concerning the licensing of dogs and cats. Pursuant to a 2012 intergovernmental agreement, the city partnered Jefferson County and other municipalities to fund and operate the Foothills Animal Shelter as a centralized animal shelter resource for the region. The IGA requires each party to delegate its authority to issue dog licenses to a common licensing administrator and adopt dog licensing requirements that are consistent with the county's dog licensing requirements. This ordinance amends the pertinent sections of the city code to comply with these two IGA requirements.
The city clerk, please assign an ordinance number.
Excuse me. This will be ordinance number 1540.
Thank you. Is there any staff presentation besides the executive summary, chief?
The only thing that I would just add to what Councilor Demott has stated is that this IGA was done in cooperation with Jefferson County, with the Foothills Animal Shelter, and with the support of city staff and our Animal Welfare Commission. And I believe Heather Cameron, the Executive Director of Foothills Animal Shelter, is here to just speak on a couple topics as well.
Please step forward and just spell your last name for the record.
Cameron, C-A-M-E-R-O-N. Good evening. I'm back. Thank you all for your support of this change and for Foothills Animal Shelter. The ordinance change allows us to utilize dog licensing funds to support the operations of Foothills Animal Shelter. We are your local community shelter, serving six municipalities and the county, especially Wheat Ridge and the animal control officers who we partner with and community service officers every day. At Foothills, we're serving over 8,000 animals a year, and that number is climbing. They come to us in all sizes and shapes. We actually have a pig right now. I'm doing a plug. If anyone needs a pig, please see me after the meeting. We do serve cats and dogs and lots of critters, chickens and roosters and ducks and snakes. But cats and dogs is primarily who we serve. Many of them come to us lost. Over half the animals that come to us are called stray animals. They're lost, and they're brought to us by Good Samaritans and by animal control and community service officers. Our work is to get as many of those animals home as we possibly can get home. And licensing is going to be key in helping us get those animals home. I don't know if you are starting to see a campaign we're doing about if it was only this easy to get home. You'll see a dog in a taxi cab, and the messaging is around, boy, if a dog could just get on RTD, ride a bicycle, take a taxi, and get home, wouldn't that be a wonderful thing? With licensing and the new licensing program that we're adopting and as the administrator of the licensing program, Good Samaritans and animal service officers are going to be able to get more animals home if they're tagged. Good Samaritans are going to be able to look online on what is on the tag number to go to a database that is on every tag and to look where the animal lives, be able to call the owner and say, I think I have your animal. That's great news for us at Foothills Animal Shelter. We are getting more and more older animals, animals that need lots of medical care. We're getting premature animals that need to be bottle-fed to stay alive. We're getting animals that are getting hit by cars with no medical care. And our job is to try to keep them alive and to get them home or get them to their new forever home. The ordinance helps sustain Foothills Animal Shelter. We have currently a $2.5 million operating budget. We're hoping this will be about a third of our budget to help sustain us. We're a very lean machine. We're open 24 hours a day. Our building never turns off. We have 47 staff and 400 volunteers. So I want to thank you very, very much for your support and consideration of the ordinance change.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number one? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Emotions in order?
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 11-2013, an ordinance amending Sections 4.1, 4.8, and 4.31 of the Wheat Ridge Municipal Code concerning the licensing of dogs and cats on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number one. It was seconded by Mr. Pond. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item two is Council Bill Number 10-2013. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce Council Bill Number 10-2013, an ordinance adopting by reference the 2011 edition of the National Electrical Code, providing penalties for violations thereof and amending portions of Chapter 5 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning electrical inspections at issue in this matter. The 2005 edition of the National Electrical Code, the NEC, was previously adopted by the city to govern electrical system safety. The agency that promulgates the NEC, the National Fire Protection Association Incorporated, has published a 2011 edition of the NEC, which contains updated regulations and requirements. This ordinance adopts the 2011 NEC to bring the city's electrical system requirements and regulations closer to uniformity with the state and with other jurisdictions that have adopted the most recent edition of the NEC. The ordinance also consolidates all code provisions concerning electrical requirements, substantive requirements, inspection requirements, and the authorization of fees into Code Section 5-77. Currently, such requirements are located throughout Chapter 5 of the code in Sections 5-56 through 5-75 and 5-77.
I thank you. With the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1541.
Thank you. Do we have any other staff presentation beyond the executive summary?
Excuse me. Here for questions, as is John Schumacher, our chief building official. Should you have any?
Okay, thank you. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number two? Seeing none, we'll move on to council questions and discussion? Any council discussion? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and a motions in order?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 10-2013, an ordinance adopting by reference the 2011 edition of the National Electrical Code, providing penalties for violations thereof and amending portions of Chapter 5 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning electrical inspections on second reading and that it take effect November 1, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number two. It was seconded by Mr. Stites. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to set the date and time of the public hearing. Public comment is not allowed on first reading. Amendments are allowed on first reading. Item three is Council Bill 12-2013. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce Council Bill Number 12-2013, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 5, 2013 election concerning an increase in the sales and use tax rate. At issue in this matter, city council directed staff to move forward with a ballot question requesting a 1% increase to the city's sales and use tax rate. To include this question on the 2013 ballot, the city council must set the final ballot language and submit to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder by September 6. Setting the ballot language by ordinance requires a first reading on August 12, and a second reading and public hearing on August 26 to meet this deadline. This time, I would like to read the ballot question, and which is thus. Shall the city of Wheat Ridge taxes be increased $6.5 million in calendar year 2014 through an increase in the city's sales and use tax rate of 1 cent, 1%, on each $1, and by whatever additional amounts are raised annually in each subsequent year? Which revenues shall be invested in the community to improve and enhance the safety and quality of life of Wheat Ridge residents and secure the city's financial future through, but not limited to, the following? Road and bridge construction, stormwater drainage construction and maintenance, and capital maintenance to provide a safe and effective city infrastructure system. Investing in capital projects that support the business growth of our community. And shall the city be permitted to collect, retain, and spend the revenues from such increase, including all interest derived therefrom, without regard to the revenue-raising, debt limitation, or other restrictions of Article 10, Section 20 of the Colorado Constitution? And that's also known as the Tabor Amendment.
Emotions in order?
Let me find the motion. Here we go. Okay. I move to approve Council Bill 12-2013, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 5, 2013 election concerning an increase in the sales and use tax rate on first reading. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, August 26, 2013, at 7:00 PM in city council chambers, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number three. It was seconded by Mr. Demott. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item four. Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce motion to approve a ward of RFP 1311 to RMC Consultants Incorporated for environmental consulting services related to an EPA Brownfields Assessment Grant for a not-to-exceed amount of $280,000. The Community Development Department applied for and received a $400,000 Brownfields Assessment Grant from the Environmental Protection Agency in 2012. The purpose of the grant is to undertake environmental assessments on potentially contaminated properties within the city of Wheat Ridge. The city entered into a cooperative agreement with EPA in September of last year concerning the expenditures of the grant funds. Per the cooperative agreement, the city released a request for proposal in March of 2013 for solicitation of an environmental consultant to undertake the preparation of the environmental assessments as outlined in the grant. In April 2013, 15 firms submitted proposals. After a thorough review of all proposals, interviews were conducted with six firms. Based on the experience of the consulting team, qualifications of the firm, the project approach, references, fee schedule, the selection committee recommends RMC Consultants Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $280,000. RMC was established in 1990 to provide environmental services, including site assessment, characterization, cultural resources, and technical administrative support to federal, state, and local government clients. The firm is highly respected, small minority-owned business, and located in Wheat Ridge and employs more than 50 technically diverse professionals and personnel. The staff offers the city expertise in program, project management, environmental science and engineering, geology, natural resource management, cost estimating, permitting, auditing, and regulatory compliance, waste management, and administrative and technical support. RMC has successfully completed more than 450 projects in compliance with federal environmental regulations and acts. They have extensive experience executing contracts for federal, state, local, and agencies, and I am done.
Emotions in order?
I move to approve the award of RFP 1311 to RMC Consultants for environmental consulting services related to EPA Brownfields Assessment Grant for the not-to-exceed amount of $280,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number four. It was seconded by Davis and Mr. Reinhardt.
A double Davis.
Davis and Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, I think someone signed up on this item, didn't they? Is there someone signed up on item number four?
Well, it was the applicant. Did you want to speak on this or...? Oh, did you want to speak on this?
Just wanted to make sure there is.
Okay, please step forward. I thought you were going to answer questions if they had any.
My name is Dan Schneider, S-H-E-N-D-E-I-D-E-R. I live at 3865 Field Drive, Wheat Ridge. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to council and mayor and staff. Terricon was involved in this process, and we have filed a formal protest of it, dropped it off this afternoon, and was explained by the administrative person that we could come and speak tonight, and that would in no way jeopardize our protest rights that we filed. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and explain to you that while we understand that, you know, RMC is a qualified firm in many ways, we think that there is an opportunity here for the city to reevaluate and to look at the value that Terricon brings to this proposal. So one of the things I wanted to do, and again, Mr. Dahl, since you're here, is it okay to hand out counsel?
Anything you brought?
Anything you brought you can give to council and make it a part of the record.
I'll just give it to the clerk and she'll pass it down.
So in reviewing the agenda for the council meeting tonight, there was an attachment to the motion for this, and so what we did is, you know, I had the opportunity to put together the pricing for the, basically to find scope that was given out in order to get final pricing from RMC. This is all really spelled out in detail, but the bottom line is we are concerned about the awarding of the project. We think that there was some scoring inconsistencies. We've outlined these in detail. I don't want to go into ad nauseam. This is what we prepared that we dropped off. But the bottom line is for the citizens of Wheat Ridge, which I am one, you know, whether it's paving streets, landscape designers, or environmental consultants, I think that value is really important, and certainly qualified value, people with experience in these fields. So we're trying to understand the situation, and we're also trying to, you know, give Wheat Ridge the opportunity to, you know, to look at the things that had gone on during this process. And again, you know, we're a member of the community. We've been here for 19 years. I mean, we have 85 people in the Wheat Ridge office. But one of the things is that, you know, we still live and work here every day, too. So again, we had lodged this officially. My intent was to drop it off early enough in the day that it could have actually been reviewed. My understanding is that that wasn't possible, that, you know, we had to go through the procedure of me coming this evening at least to talk about it. So again, my suggestion is I don't think that it, again, in any ways, you know, slows down the process. This has been a long process. The EPA was involved. You know, there were some different things. There were reasons that we, this was put on hold. To actually postpone making, taking action on the motion that's on the floor right now until you've had a chance to review it. And certainly that can be done after the motion is made, but again, it seems prudent at this point to actually to look at, okay, so what is the bottom line here? What are we looking for in a consultant? And again, I didn't eloquently explain it as I think that we have in the proposal. We spent quite a bit of time going through this. So again, my suggestion, and certainly as a citizen, I would ask that at least it be evaluated objectively by the staff and whoever, and if the decision is in order, then let's move forward with it and let's get some more development along that corridor. That's our intent. So thank you.
Mr. Dahl? So the city, the council has a motion in front of them to approve. What other options do they have? Can they postpone, or can they move forward? What do you suggest? What do you, what are the options?
Your options are you can approve this, you can reject it, and I think there's an alternate motion in the packet for rejection, or you can continue the matter for action. You, all three are, options are available to you. The filing of a protest does not obligate you, as I think even the speaker recognized, does not obligate you to refrain from acting on the matter if you wish. If you act on it, and let's say you approve it, the staff will still review the protest as is the staff's administrative policy, and to the extent the staff feels that the matter ought to be brought back to you, it will. That would happen in the normal course of events. Normal course of events being there's a bid, it's approved, and then the protest usually comes in after the bid because you're protesting the fact that a bid's actually been awarded. It hasn't been awarded yet, but I understand and appreciate why it got filed early, and that's fine, but in the normal course of events, the staff would review a bid protest, and if it felt, if the staff felt that there'd be a need to bring it back to you, the staff would. So those are your choices, approve, deny, continue for action.
Mr. Dahl, make sure I understand you, the staff. If we approved the motion tonight, the staff would review, and if they found that the, there was substance to the complaint, they would then not award on their own judgment and some new rebid process or something would be likely to follow. But they would, if there was substance to the, I don't want to use the...
To the allegations in the protest.
To the complaint, that the staff would then evaluate that and could stop it at that point in time.
Could stop the process and bring it back to you. Mr. Dahl might have something else.
Yeah, actually, we won't move forward on, if you do award the contract tonight to RMC, we won't move forward until the protest review is done and a decision is made.
So we have a motion to approve, Mr. Stites?
Quick question, was TerraCon part of the initial process?
Yes, there was, I think, 15 companies that initially bid, and all I can speak to it.
Yeah, just briefly go over the process to select. Was a very competitive process in response to the RFP. 15, you know, qualified firms did respond. We had an interview panel of three staff that reviewed those, evaluated them, scored them initially just based on the kind of paper version of their qualifications, and from that, we got a list of six that we felt were all worthy candidates and interviewed those individuals, those individual firms. After that interview process, we, of the six firms, we shortlisted to four firms that we thought were best qualified from the scoring from that process, which was the second round of scoring, if you will. And then from that, you know, we really evaluated a variety of factors. Certainly pricing was a component of that. Qualifications were very key. Project approach was very key, and of course, I think it's always important to just get the best fit in terms of who you think's going to represent the city best out in the public and with our community. And it was a very competitive process, and we feel confident that RMC emerged as the top candidate based on that qualification of very strong references, a project approach that we thought was a good fit for what we needed. Obviously, environmental qualifications of the firm and pricing was competitive as well.
Does anybody on council want to make a motion to continue? We want to move forward with the motion to approve.
I have another question.
Mr. Starke?
Mr. Johnstone, was TerraCon in the round of six and then in the round of four?
Yes, they were.
Thank you.
No motion to continue? Okay, we have a motion to approve. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to one with Mr. Starke voting no.
Thank you. So that concludes our agenda for this evening. We'll move on to city manager's matters.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce our new Public Works Director this evening. His just started today. Mr. Scott Brink came from the state of Minnesota, worked in a town very similar to Wheat Ridge, about the same size and an entering suburb of Minneapolis. So a lot of comparables, so we're happy to have him here, and as I said, today's his first day, so he's still learning.
Thank you.
He's welcome.
You're used to the snow? Good. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following some complaints that I had two weeks ago, and some concerns from business owners and from citizens, I sent out an email concerning some sales tax leaking questions. I referred to the SIRS A handbook to find the policy on how to file a complaint. I followed the policy in the handbook and sent an email to all council members, the city attorney, and the city manager. You know, the timing of it was unfortunate. It seems that it was taken very political, but it is certainly not political. It was a very legitimate concern of mine. I think, I take the privacy of the sales tax very seriously, and I think a sales tax leak must be very, taken very seriously and investigated. Therefore, I move to direct the city attorney to conduct an investigation regarding the leak of tax information to Councilmember Reinhardt from City Manager Patrick Goff and determine where else and to whom that tax information may have landed. I further move that the city attorney brief us at the next regular business meeting on the concluding information as well as the true process of obtaining tax records, who is to be trusted with this information on a regular basis, and if it indeed is being kept secret, and by whom.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for an investigation with second by Mr. Stites, discussion? Mr. Pond?
I guess I would ask if this was to move forward, what the process would look like specifically?
Mr. Dahl?
Well, either I or someone in my office, or it may well be that I would want to engage outside counsel to conduct the investigation, but what I would expect that whoever it would be that would do that would review the emails that exist, the documents that were produced, and interview the individuals that have been identified, and any that would be identified as part of the investigation that have been party to conversations, whatever, assemble that information in a report that then could be placed in a form that could be delivered to the council with any recommendations that there would be. I'm not going to prejudge, you know, what would be the outcome of any kind of investigation, but it would really be a review of documents, which would include emails, which in my understanding are fairly limited, frankly, and interviewing of persons that had contact with this issue one way or another, and assembling that into a report. So that would be the process pretty straightforward. I wouldn't expect that it would take very long. I would expect probably a couple of weeks whether I did it or whether I, after thinking about it, felt that I needed to have independent outside counsel do that work. Nevertheless, it's pretty limited in scope.
Any other comments or questions before I poll the council? Ms. Davis?
I just have a quick comment, because I do believe it's good that this is investigated. I think all parties interested have welcomed the investigation as the intent was not to be negligent, or I don't think that was the intent. I also would like the respect of all parties included that this is an investigation, that, you know, the hearsay and that type of thing, we don't allow that to flourish, especially during this type of environment, and that we do wait for the investigation and not create more flurries of rumors and that type of thing. That's just my personal comment.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would agree with Ms. Davis's comment that we always welcome any type of clarity of information. I think we're all feeling pretty comfortable with it, and that's the only comment I have.
From a procedural standpoint, I would say that if the, if we can maybe have the
motion read back, because if it concerns an individual council member's conduct, then that council member would not be able to vote on this motion, since the rule of law is that council members may not vote on their own conduct, on matters concerning their own conduct.
Mr. Dahl, I'll plan on abstaining either way.
Go ahead and read the motion again, Mr. Dahl?
No, if, I recall, I think, Mr. Reinhardt's name being mentioned in the motion, and so long as it's clear that he'll be abstaining.
May I? Just for the, just for the record, since I won't be voting, I wasn't planning to anyway, I welcome a complete and thorough and rapid investigation of this matter.
Mr. Demott, you had a question? Okay. Please poll the council on the motion to investigate.
I didn't think I was going to have to use my microphone again tonight. Motion carries seven zero with Mr. Reinhardt abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Pond.
Nothing more tonight.
Ms. Davis?
Just a quick note, I think a lot of people had made mention of some activity going around, going on in Wheat Ridge as far as development, and Kipling and 38th, and 38th, and Wadsworth, and, you know, I just, and I know those are in the works, and I just want to thank the staff, the city staff, on their work, because I know they're really working on development. I'd like to thank Wheat Ridge 2020 for also helping, but I do think, and I want to thank the council, and because I do think that this is a council that wants to move forward, that wants to see things happen in our city, and so I want to thank everybody for that. And the other thing I want to say is, as you'll probably see in the next council meeting, we thought long and hard about the tax increases, and, you know, we looked at the numbers, and there was things to consider as far as mill levies on property taxes and/or sales tax, and what would be fair to the members and the community of Wheat Ridge, and we really felt that the sales tax was something that is absorbed by more than just community members of Wheat Ridge, and the sales tax is absorbed by people visiting our city, it's absorbed by all members of the city, if you're a homeowner or renter. So we felt that that was a fair way to distribute some of the taxes, and I for one am not big on taxes, but I do feel that this is very necessary for our city to improve and move the way we want to move. And then I think we can see the growth in some of the cities next to us, and I think that's where we all want to be, and we're a little bit behind the eight ball on that, and so I'm hopeful that that'll move forward, and I'm open and willing to talk to anyone who has questions, and I'll probably be knocking on some doors as well, so that's all.
Mr. Stark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a great deal tonight, but I would like to welcome our new Public Works Director to our city. You are coming to work for a fine city administration in a great city. We welcome you here and look forward to working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt.
I guess I'd like to say that one of the great events we're going to have this week is the formal opening of the facility right across the street and the new CPN clinic. There's an event on Wednesday, and I think many of us will probably attend at 3:00.
Ms. Jay?
Couple things. First of all, I'm amazed that we're sitting here ignoring the Carnation Festival, which starts this weekend, which will be, of course, Saturday and Sunday. That's going to be a really great event. It was the 44th. I think they're kind of getting it down as to how to do that one. And on the taxing, I'm delighted that we've come to, that we will be offering this to the public to make a decision about whether they want to add this 1-cent tax increase, which of course will help the city and all of the deep problems that are going on as far as roads and bridges and various needs, but most important, that we use this versus any kind of a surcharge or another way of raising money. The public has the opportunity, which I really like, to make their decision as to whether they do want to see a better city, and I'm really excited about that. Okay?
Ms. Langworthy?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. One, yeah, the Carnation Festival, I think the parade is, starts at 10:00 on Saturday. Would be a great time to relocate to Wheat Ridge, either your business or your home. If you need any help, contact one of us or staff, and they'd be happy to help you. Positive thing this time, you know, I've driven around all summer long, and especially lately, and drive around and just take a look at the amount of big dumpsters out in front of businesses and/or homes, and there's a lot of stuff going on, a lot of remodeling going on, a lot of landscape going on, and I just, we all think that's fantastic because you're showing an investment in your community, which you have to have to make a community survive. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned. We're adjourned.[1774.96]